Bringing the August twelve, twenty twenty four, special working as a big bearing, Big Bear Regional Waste Water Agency to order.
Please join me in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a legal approval of the agenda. Um, I do have a question about the agenda. We have, it's like we still have a legal amount of people here who want to talk. On the uh, on the item of the EIR for the replenished big bear, on on the board, you want a new possession of sources, point two items so that we can. Otherwise, yeah, it's good if you're waiting for them to come back from the operation.
It's finally made, makes sense.
So you're in a motion in seconds.
So we need a motion in seconds to, I guess, switch both sessions with all business. All right, motion.
I'll second.
Vice Chair Herrick?
Aight.
Director Russo?
I.
Director Stelios?
I'm.
Director Walsh?
Aight.
And Chair Miller?
Aight.
All right, moving on then to old business is our resolution, um, eight twenty twenty four, um. So we bought a big area, recent waste water agency adopting the environmental findings and statement of overriding the regulations. Uh, because of the California environment, all we had certifying replenished big bear program, find out any environmental impact reported. Documentation on a reported program and approving the whole then. So we can have staff presentation.
Actually, at this time, since we've already actually given the presentation, this is a continuation. Um, we don't have a presentation tonight. Um, it's at the chair's leisure to allow for public comment and then take it back to the, the board for discussion.
We do have response to comments for friends of Big Bear.
Okay. But, yeah, they weren't, they weren't.
So this is not a public hearing. What we did was we uh, continued, closed the public hearing last time and continued this to date certain. Um, public hearing was closed, but we, we, we are allowed to have public input at this time. So do we have any cards? Anybody?
Sandy?
Speak on this item?
I have one.
Thank you.
Glad you made that clarification. They'll ask me to do it three.
Sandy?
I'd be first.
I just wanted to point out that I added some more questions and I hope you're listening to them, but um. I'm just still confused about why there's always to be in such areas to feel like it's supposed to be. Environmental, that kind of, kitchens and everything kind of, rather than what we designed, so. I just wanted to bring up the record to, I don't know against this problem. We think it's only here that this thing is to be that light. And there are a lot of things that they still remain that would, um. I just don't believe it to be answered. We could, we're still, we're not embarrassed.
Daniel?
Good evening, people. I can see that we have a whole table of BBK people here. So that means you want to pass this hell or high water? What else is new? Andy, I hope you don't. You know, we just had a director of secret service that tried her best to kill our president. In our government. We've had numerous other things in our government that is just absolutely insane. And now you people want to spend all kinds of money for us, for slots out here as pissants. To pay the property tax, yeah, property tax rates and other things. Why is that? Last week. You weren't even sure about your equipment. Be this type of equipment, be that type of equipment, it's high altitude, low altitude. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. That effort went how many ten years and you claim ten million dollars you spent doing this? And nobody can put out any clear. Ideas, any clear things to make this work. Why is that? You give a thousand pages, a thousand pages here, a thousand pages over there and three lawyers? Are you a lawyer down there in the blue? Why do you have three lawyers here? I'll tell you why. Did you guys screw it up so badly? This is nothing more than toilet to tap. We've got water going down to, to Lucerne for fifty years, fifty years. And I keep hearing, oh, wow. You know, the Mojave water industry, we're gonna do this or that. Why don't we find out if that's gonna happen? Is it gonna happen now or ten years from now? And why would that be closed up? It seems like it's been in good use for many years and not spend a ton of money. Can any of you explain that to me? Probably not. This is simply a toilet to tap. So how much is that gonna cost us on our property tax? How much is that gonna cost us in extra expense? Well, I'll tell you. Like what happened to Big Bear disposal, they brought in twenty thousand or fifteen thousand trash cans and it was just a big cluster. They brought in all these trash cans. And then picked them all up. And denied, oh, well, we should have done this, we should have done that. Unbelievable. Have you checked? Have you checked? What the hell happened on that government cluster? Do you know how your trash cans, they say they have trash cans over in their warehouse on, at North Shore. That's a lie. Where are they? What it costs? Did anybody investigate? We don't have any investigations. We have corruption. We don't have honest people. We have typical. I used to call it swamp. Now it's just a septic tank. Passing of laws. And when you have to have this many BBK people here, it really makes me wonder. So. You can do, of course, you want to pass it because you want that twenty million or twenty-five million dollars. Does that only come up once in a lifetime? You have to do something wrong. It seems like our city, Big Bear Lake, they push up against the wall. They say, well, we don't do this now, we're gonna do this twenty-seven million. Well, maybe you should lose it. Maybe you should not back people's back up against the wall. Maybe you should do something properly. Maybe you should give more information. But you don't. And I'm just amazed that. How you do it? So even buy new trucks, you know, add on to your building, more pay, another hundred thousand in payroll? Big Bear disposal bought a whole new fleet of trucks. Have you checked on that? They bought all kinds of new stuff. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Joyce?
So everybody can have a comment. Thank you. My name is Joyce. The GPA agreement that created this bar agency never got the consent of the government and moved ahead in the shadows without the knowledge of the community in which it serves. Which is an independent district of the Big Bear City, Sugar Oak, Walton Lake, Burnham Lake, and Lake Nolos. Many of us actually live here and have come forward through this past year and have continued to tell you, we don't want this, we can't afford this. It, it's a ridiculous project for us. The state and federal agencies continue to dangle carrots in the form of grants in front of you. To get you to sell out your community. The amount of money this replenished project would cost using these grants would end up costing more. For us than what, what the grants are worth. The agency has tried to tax and regulate us in a form of slavery. I would choose to completely disconnect from all services so that I can afford my home and keep my sovereignty and my independence. My family has been here for sixty-two years and the amount of taxation and utility cost has gotten totally out of control. Here in Big Bear City, we are an independent district of the Big Bear City Community Service District who has no police or regulatory authority. Yet they continue to act as if CSD community has no say in this project while you plan to impose massive costs, regulations, mandates on us. Most of the community has no knowledge of your plans because we have not been properly notified. I personally spoken to many of my neighbors who are completely in the dark. The reason for this massive project hasn't even become law by the state at this time. This whole project is a presumption that some of them will be required. You continue to expect east, the east end, the CSD district to not only fund your plan, but to give up our rights as an independent district in local jurisdiction to decide which plan would be best for our community. And I want to make sure that these lawyers don't understand that. CSD is an independent district. Our community plans to fight this total government overreach and will fight for justice and liberty afforded to us by the constitution. If you think this project will happen without fighting, you are mistaken. We will fight for justice regarding the damages as a result of this project. We want accountability. Like the trash can issue. We decide for how long, uh, we, we should decide how and when this project happens along with the CSD board. Who have repeatedly stated they want the community to not only be informed, but be able to vote on this issue. The Big Bear City Community Service District also unanimously voted not to fund this project. They are the ones accountable because they are the ones that have taken an oath of office to protect our community. I ask our CSD members here on this board to have courage to do what you know is right and you know what is right. For our community, the property owners and the taxpayers who pay your, your salary and both are on this environmental impact report to replenish. Let's bring this issue back to the CSD community to decide and implement what is best for the East End. Any certification done here today will be challenged and considered not valid. You are hereby notified of picking losses should you attempt to certify this environmental impact report. When these big decisions are made, but not only, when these big decisions are being made, not only are individually, but as community. We need to be a part of the decision making. This is hard. We can have a bribe to decide what happens then. Thank you.
You can't talk.
I'm so happy, I didn't, I thought it was five thirty.
That's right, just go ahead and go to the podium.
Can I talk right now? I didn't hear him, he didn't even say, oh, sorry, I'm just, sorry about that, I'm sorry. Thank you for being here. Okay. I don't know what was said already, it might have been said, you guys know what I'm gonna say. And we are a democracy. Where majority rules and laws and makes all the decisions, period. We do not get to vote. Or have a say so is not a majority, it is a dictatorship, which is what exactly we get here. Put this project on the twenty-four, twenty-five, the twenty-four ballot, okay? I just woke up. Our administrative government will, will keep us slaves like we have been indoctrinated our entire lives. By the IRS, the FBI, the CIA, plus, 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 any of the three letters in the whole world means that we are the slaves. We are the sovereign people and we are demanding you stop this project. Each and every one of you will be held responsible for the action you are taking today. It is a matter of time before it's over with. Three. Stop this fraudulent, new novel project now, control our infrastructures and control our world and leave us with a hundred and fifty million dollar debt to be paid by our local taxpayers. We are living in an economy time bomb right now. Our economy is done. We cannot afford people like you to be making decisions about without a public vote, period. Any of you? March twenty-first, Big Bear Grizzly, five out of five, Big Bear CSD members say no to the water project. No! What part don't you understand? No to the water project, says it. Okay, three Barla board members, John Russo, Larry Walsh, and Kenny Segovia have voted no against the water, water project, okay? Two members, Rick Harry, you, and Jim Miller say yes, okay? Majority rules. Does that not count anymore? Three against two, okay? However, apparently according to the triad of Rick Harry, Jim Miller, Dave Lawrence, just like the good old days, I don't know, do everything that you've done forever. For, 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 you guys have been working together for a long time and you know it. It is a fact, our local government is a reflection of the Biden Obama regime and wants to turn all law-abiding constitutionalists into socialist, I want to say pigs, but I'm not good at it.
Pigs.
Our valley has a lot more to lose than to gain, like our fresh spring water that we've had forever, like our, like, like the potable water that's, you know, our wells, it's gonna be destroyed. And no other benefits except for, no, no, no other benefits except for governmental control and our infrastructure. They control our infrastructure and they control us, period. They control everything. Take away our infrastructure, just do that. And the few deep, they can, what, what, what they get? A few deep pocketbooks. It feeds a few deep pocketbooks and huge egos. I don't know who that could be. What monetary gain can each one of you get? And I don't get, and don't give me this bullshit about, oh, we only make a hundred and fifty dollars. That's bullshit, you know it. We the people and the majority of the Big Bear Valley are demanding that you stop this water project today. Stop and face reality. You know what this project is really about. Gain for a few of your pocketbooks only. That's it. This is one of the biggest USA, Big Bear Day, um. Scams in the, in, in, kind of, let's see. Anyway, it's the biggest scams of our lives, period. Put this on the real, put this on the ballot. Ask everybody, just three of you cannot decide that this is gonna happen. Anyway, we the people of BigBear.com say no. And I heard you three do not say that I said, because it's majority rules. Majority, period.
I don't care. Leading us back to the Lord for the comments and respect them.
We're not gonna have Sandy speak?
She did.
She did, she did.
Oh, I guess she did, I thought I meant.
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, so, so, just, just, any questions?
I just want to say I'm a little dismayed that it, it's been a couple of months now since Sandy sent us her first letter and then we haven't been able to. Answer her. I thought by now, you know, we would have answers for her.
Her, her answers. Her answers have been answered in the, in the.
Right, but I mean, she still is sending us a letter saying that she's, has concerns.
I, I understand, but some of those answers that she's asking, we can't address until the. The, the answers that she's asking for, we can't address until we actually have the design.
It sounds like she may not have a level of comfort with that, though.
And, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that level of comfort. Unfortunately, it just comes when the design is, is, uh, when the design, when we get into the design phase. It'll, we'll have a better level of comfort and, and more information to offer. Regarding to the, the, the specific item that she's raised now, which is just on the Brian Pond itself.
I, I, I had a little bit of similar concern, not, not so much on the, on answer questions, because I do think design is only to dictate that, um. But I, I noticed that on the, um, recommendation number two, you say bring it back to the workshop, at least thirty day prior to work consideration. For the design, that may actually assist the environmental consult, because if they want to take this back to environmental review, is there a, a way to do an environmental opinion on that design? Is there any experience with that? Notice that we get a design and we have, we have a series of questions here. And we really can't answer those until the final design is in place, you know, then we're ready to go. But that level of comfort, you know, concerning Sandy's concern and some other people in the audience, is there, is there, is a way to do that? I, I don't know.
So every, uh, this is Caitlin of Tom Dodson Associates speaking, um. Every environmental component or component of the project will need to be found to be consistent with the EIR, um, the findings in the EIR. And that can be done through a follow-on, uh, like through what we, we call, uh, in our office, a finding of consistency. Where you would file a notice of determination saying, uh, we reviewed the design, we reviewed, uh, the project and then it can go forward through a notice of determination being filed. Uh, again, and then if for some reason, um, the impacts were found to be outside of what was analyzed in the EIR, move forward with an addendum. Or a follow-on initial study and then the, the ultimate would be a follow-on EIR depending upon. What the design determines. Um, so there are a lot of checks and balances in the secret process where you would be approving today a, um. Considering approval of an environmental impact report that's pragmatic in nature. And so it, the scope is generally kind of at a higher level than, uh, a typical EIR for a specific project. Now, this particular EIR has a lot of project detail in it because we did have that sort of information from the thirty percent design or. You know, preliminary design, uh, could be the correct. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just don't know how to point that into the recommendation for approval.
There, there's no need to actually frame it into the recommendation approval because it's already built into the, into the, into the process.
So then thirty days prior to that, if the facts is out there, there's determination that is consistent with the EIR. Uh, and that information will be made available to the general public thirty days in advance of this board taking a final vote on that particular design.
Yes.
Of project, that.
Yes.
Yes.
So the concern is protection of birds getting into, I just want to make sure we're clear that and also possible dust that might be created. Uh, are there worse, are there ways to mitigate those two issues?
Yeah, I don't know, Lane, if you want to address that specifically, but I know the birds, there, the, we talked about netting, um. And maybe a lot of, it's gonna be, there's wedded, so there's, go ahead.
Yeah, we can answer that. Um, this is Lane Carlson with RNC. During finals of lines will consider various ways to, you know, provide for physical barriers as well as deterrents for home birds and other wildlife. So at that time, we'll be evaluating various alternatives. And so we don't right now have a final decision on, um, what's gonna be the most. Effective way to move over those features into the design because we also have to think about the functionality of the pond's access, everything like that. And so that will be considered during the night. In terms of the, sorry about, you know, dust or, or the solids really. And those ponds will actually never be operated dry. Um, they'll stay, you know, with at least a little bit of water, so that will prevent. Um, you know, dried solids from blowing off the site. And for some reason, um, you know, pond water to start to dry out are going to very easily have some, you know, processed water to keep it out of that. So that's part of the operation we can put upon. So, um, we anticipate that that would be sufficient mitigation to, uh, prevent, you know, wind blown. Uh, solids from leaving the site. Then there's also, um, you know, what we call freeboard on the pond, so the actual water level will be at least below the top of the pond. And that also helps to make sure that, that that pond stays inside of the pond.
So the disposal of the brine is really sort of a sludge, bro? So I understand that it's not a dried material, it's not a salty material.
Yeah, it should be highly, highly concentrated, but still, but.
And just one other, Dave, this, yeah, it was covered by a grant, right?
The IRR is covered by a grant, yes.
Okay, so that's. And then in regards to whether the project is organized, that grant just covers the EIR and we are in a position of.
As long as the grant, as long as the EIR is certified, then it is covered by a grant. If it is not certified, then it would not be covered by the grant.
So if we certify it, then there's actually no cost to the, there aren't rate pairs at this time.
Um, I don't, I don't, I think everything is a hundred percent covered on the, on the EIR.
Okay, any other comments or questions? I'll bring this back for our promotion.
I'm moving to adopt resolution R zero eight, twenty twenty four and direct staff to include or punish, that's for recommendation.
I'll be back in there.
Vice Chair Herrick?
Aight.
Director Russo?
No.
Director Segovia?
No.
Director Walsh?
No.
And Chair Miller?
We'll start moving into close session. So we're gonna move into a close session because this is a special meeting, there is no public comment during tonight, so unless, um, so unless you're here to talk on any items on item six. Then I'm thinking, yeah, um, we'll, we'll probably be on the close session for that happening. Let's bring the meeting back to order. Uh, no reportable action on close session at this time. We'll move on to new business. Item six A, work contract from municipal advisory, replacement agent services, retain bond counts to replenish Big Bear final design funding.
I, I would just, I would just suggest that we table that indefinitely.
Do you have a motion for it?
Please.
Move the table, six A indefinitely.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
Vice Chair Herrick?
Aight.
Director Russo?
Aight.
Director Segovia?
Aight.
Director Walsh?
Aight.
And Chair Miller?
Aight. And it's a B, a work contract with, when you took my, my project and really paying five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, uh, if the board recalls at the last meeting, um, you gave me an authorization to advertise that project. Um, it, uh, advertises this, this Thursday. Um, but just because we're up against a time crunch with weather, uh, paving and those kind of things. Um, based on the projected start date, um, we would suggest that the board authorize, um, the general manager to award a contract. And get, um, with this not to exceed number of one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six ninety, six forty-five. Um, and so that way we can make sure that the work gets done timely before winter starts. Uh, because, because of the paving and the heating of the liner that goes in the, um, forest main. So, um, with that, I'm open for any questions.
Board members, are we authorized saying to not block competitive bid because it's an engine thing, or are we doing a competitive bid?
No, we're doing competitive bid.
Do you just want to, right? Is that what you're?
We're expediting it so that way we can beat the winter. Um, and so in, instead of taking the step where I would bring back bids to the board to value, to, uh, present back to the board, um, the evaluated bids. I'm just going to evaluate them and you're going to, uh, author, if, if the board chooses, they can authorize me to go ahead and award a contract based on those. Uh, on those, based on those bids.
So this item, the one point three million wasn't anticipated, is that correct?
It wasn't anticipated. We originally had, um, we originally had, uh, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine. That, uh, dollars, but based on the evaluation of the, uh, line itself. Um, WSC felt like we should extend that as far as we can, um. West, to get all of, there's a high point in the line and we want to get all of the high point. Um, either replaced or relined, um, with this project and do it all at once. Um, with this project and do it all at once.
And that line's about fifty years old, correct?
Yeah, fifty-one or fifty-two years old now.
How many miles of, of force main do we have, you know, system, I mean, we're dealing with, that's. Thirty-three hundred feet, we're gonna one point three million, thirty-three hundred feet.
Yeah, we have, well, we have the seventeen miles that goes down to Lasserna, that's force main. Um, we also have the balance of this line, and I think this is like twelve miles of line. Um, we also have some that comes from, um, north shore. And I, I don't recall exactly, um, because some of it's forced and then it turns into gravity fed. Uh, I think that's another six or seven miles, so, so we have quite a bit of line, um, that's considered force main. Um, not all of them were put in the same time, this one specifically was put in, in the, I think nineteen seventy-seven or so. Um, the, definitely by nineteen eighty, the force main that went down the backside is, was installed as well.
Questions? So the force line down to Lasserna. Uh, at this rate, one point three for thirty-three hundred feet, will that cost less?
Just, um, just a quick count on it, if we, if we. If we said, so there's five thousand two hundred and eighty feet in a mile, times seventeen miles. We have eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty, um. So eighty-nine thousand, so, uh, have a pen, look. Eighty-nine.
One point three divided by thirty-three.
So, yeah, so thirty-three hundred linear feet, uh, or excuse me, one point three million. Divided by thirty-three hundred. Uh, it's three hundred and ninety-three dollars per linear foot. Um, times eighty-nine, seven sixty. Uh, that is thirty-five million, three hundred and sixty thousand.
And that's for lining.
That's for lining, now, I don't know whether we're replacing some, lining some, because remember four miles is. Uh, pump, it's pumped up to, for four miles and then it drops off the backside and we, we're, we were expecting. Some high velocities in the line, you'd have a lot of scouring on the line, so I don't know if it would be lining or replacing, so we'd, we'd have to discuss it, that's why.
It'd be more if it was replaced.
Much more if it was replaced, and remember, we're dealing with, uh, the other part that we're not, you know, that doesn't account for here. The difference is all of the environmental. Uh, because this is all forest service land, the, the force main, that goes down the backside, so that. When, when Lane and I, uh, had a discussion about that lane, that, uh, line, uh, she, and, uh. We made a list and we thought it was about eighty million. Uh, to, to, uh, either replace or, uh, to replace that line. Maybe be less if we did a, a lining of the whole thing, we might, we might be doing it for fifty or sixty or seventy million, something like that.
So I'm just supposing and guessing now, in, in light of the forest service. Uh, turning down the permit for Arrowhead Water use with their pipes and so forth, it's probably not a slam dunk. To go to the forest service and expect that they would approve it.
No, it is not.
Any other questions? Uh, I understand you just say you wanted not to exceed number.
That's, that's correct, this is, this is, uh, I, what's in the project budget here that's being proposed is a not to exceed number.
Four hundred thirty-five, seven?
Yes. And it really doesn't change anything, because I would be bringing back, all I would be doing is bringing back the lowest. Responsive bidder to the board and they would making, they would be making that award as opposed to you authorizing me to do the same job I'm gonna do. But sooner.
And you're doing this day because of the asphalt work, right?
Asphalt and the curing to, and the, and the curing temperature of the liner itself.
Make sure I understand.
Yeah, I'm just trying to fit it in between our busy season and snow season, so I gotta fit a very small window. I really have like probably about six to eight weeks somewhere right in there, yeah, between those two seasons, and I've got to, remember, I'm gonna be. Pushing all of the city's sewer over to the ponds, which, uh, I've already spoken to Sean about. Um, because I'm gonna be pushing the, the water over there for about a week and then pumping it back into the system and. Uh, doing the work that we need to do and then pumping it back into the system and then completing the, the balance of the work, however many weeks it takes us.
Any questions? Oh, for your motion?
Should we have public comment? It is.
All right, so public comments on item six B, remind everybody to keep the comments for the item on the agenda.
Thank you. When was this found out about that the, uh, line is broken? How many months ago? Because what happens is, uh, everything seems to get pushed up against the wall, you could figure out about contracts. And this, uh, not to exceed thing. So if he comes in with one bid, is that good? But if only one comes in, it takes sometimes a little bit of time, how many people can do this project? And if this was found out about three months ago, six months ago or known, it should have been starting all the time to go. Instead of backed up against the wall. What some of you people like to do, especially in the city, everything's backed up against the wall. Well, we gotta do this right now, because if we don't. You know, we got winter coming, well, winter comes every winter, we got the same problems every winter. And it's a difficulty, I mean, is, is it spilling out on the ground? What's the situation where you can't get the three bids? We just had one over and there's, uh, they're really, they got two bids. And, uh, I don't think both of them were actually real. So I just kinda wonder, you know, you do not exceed and then you got one person deciding on, well, we better do this because our backs are up against the wall. It always seems to happen. Why can't things be done early? Did you know what the problem was? Do you know what the problem was? I mean, it could have happened yesterday. So once again, well, we gotta do this and then we'll just have to take this bid because that's it. I mean, there's, uh, not a hell of a lot of contractors around. And so you have to have extra time or should give extra time to make sure. Or get on direct mailing so you can mail some of these people to come up and invite them to bid. Because like our city, I'm gonna be inspecting every contract now, I'm gonna be relooking at them. I'm gonna be questioning, I did, uh, contracts a lot of my life and worked with the contractors, state, state license board. In, uh, Big Bear Lake, we have to seem to have this thing that, because we're a charter city, we can just break any California law. We're a charter city, we got three B B K lawyers sitting here watching us. Not that they know anything, oh, they're gonna, darn it. So I would question it and, you know, look at the bids, double check and then go from there, thank you.
You know, my way. Just kidding, um, I have one thing to say. This poor planning makes for piss poor performance, period. That's it, that's it. And so you know nothing about the board. Question? Your motion? Your motion on side?
Could I save a question?
Sure.
Um, this has been, I mean, we've known about this for a little bit, right? It's not, we're not doing this. Over the.
No, so, I mean, we've had a few different leaks. It took us, I believe there's three leaks in the, um, um, and it, so it took us, um. We had an investigation take place, we installed a T so we could get into the force main, because they don't have manuals. We sent a camera, uh, up and down the main, added, we had to do it twice, so that way we get the, uh, the right information. Sent that to the engineering, the engineers, uh, for their evaluation, we evaluated on our own and looked at the line. In that, during that process, we actually had the, the actual third leak while, while we were evaluating it. Um, they came back and we pulled record doc- documents, did all the research. All those kind of things and then, um, saw there was an issue. Went, um, and I asked them to work, move forward with, um, the design of the project. That takes, you know, it takes a couple of months for them to do that and now, and now we're here, so. There has been no, the, the, the planning has been done based on the emergency repairs that we've had in the past. Um, and to ensure that we can protect our waterways, we're taking this action now. Um, and that's our responsibility as professionals, I, you know. I've been doing, like I said, I've been doing this for twenty, almost twenty-five years now and, um, this is my recommendation to move forward and, and, um. And line this line as soon as possible.
Right, so there has been work that has been going on and this is the recommendation from the work that has been transpired.
Most definitely.
Thank you. I made the motion and we. Authorize six B.
So staff's recommendation on six B?
I'll say it. Make a point for a second, discussion. There's none, the both of our positions.
Vice Chair Herrick.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi. Six C during the August twenty eighth meeting to, but I mean, I guess that would be September twenty fifth, but yeah, next time we're gonna get together then.
That's correct.
I'll move them. And motion be approved. A second. My call please.
Vice Chair Herrick.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi. General Manager, his comments?
I have none.
How many more comments? Do you have no comments, so, oh, I'm sorry, did you have anything to say?
No. Thank you.